For me, you know, like I said, it's, uh, it was built in the early sixties, as you know. Um, had some upgrade over here, very labor intensive. Five full-time operators and stuff, so, uh, we've been working with the mayor, with the staff, and the administrator, just talking about different options, things that could be done. Um, I know the plant was looked at, you know, a number of unusual about something that could be done. Consideration is using more up-to-date different technology for treating water, because really when you look at your water system, you know, you don't have a problem with your source there, and you have a tank that was built around 2003. And, you know, your distribution system for the most part is in the same shape, considering the age of it, but the water plant is the, is the concern. So, one, you know, one thought was, um, looking at what needs to be done, you know, what are the next steps to kind of move forward on considering what would be done? You know, would be taking the old studies that were done, looking at whether it would cost either rehab this plant or a new plant with different technology, possibly even a different location, potentially building it maybe up at the water plant, or, excuse me, at the, at the water tower. Um, and then you would, you know, you could, uh, you know, demo what's down there now, so. You've got the little blue building there with the zebra, you know, yeah, zebra muscle control, you know, a couple of bulbs in the ground where we consider putting a couple of, uh, pumps in the ground, you know what I mean? You've got your intakes out into the, into the lake, so that's not a problem. Basically send the water up to the plant, then you've got the tank there for pouring disinfection, and, uh, you know, and you go from there, so.
So, what do you got, with the tip, uh, what you guys have looked at, what do you guys recommend?
Well, we've looked at a couple of different technologies in the past, um, and one of them is a sand filtration process, which is what I helped up communities across the lake in the market. It's also used on, you know, some other communities in New York with this type of water quality. Um, it works very well for today's standards and for future, you know, standards, um, and would do the job pretty well if you put a lot of quality, which has that source. So, that would be equipment that would go into a new building?
Sure.
That would be located up there?
Now, the system you wasn't at with that sand filtration system would be like an automated system, you know, going in that direction, so you don't have five full-time guys.
I think one thing that would be considered when you look at it is how much manpower would you need compared to the automation?
Sure.
And then what would happen with the staff? I don't know, if, like, staff would move into another, you know, other departments or, you know, in terms of succession plan, or, or eight July's and things like that. For a plant of this size, and I think the plant right now uses, you know, about four hundred, five hundred thousand gallons a day, five operators is fairly unusual. That's, that's labor-intensive.
Is it a system we got, we need?
For the system you have, that's what you need, and I think they do a really good job and work pretty hard, you know, provide quality water.
And you would take your new system?
Probably true. In terms of act, you would want some redundancy, you know, because people get sick, vacation, you know, things like that, but it wouldn't be unusual, we see a lot of systems of about that size, this size.
Would have demand all the time, or?
No. There, there are some systems with the, with the, you know, speed controls that are now that can, you know, go to your phone, go to the tablet, basically give you an alarm about what the problem is. You know what I mean, and then you can determine if the problem's serious enough that I need to come down to the point, or can I just wait till the morning, or can I, you know, change something? I mean, you can do a word that it's alarm only, or you can do something where you're actually able to confirm your laptop computer function, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can turn things on and off, change set points for levels if you want. It's really to the level you want, that's it.
And the money you got?
Yes.
So, have you got to the point of looking to see cost-wise, I mean, they say they're using four to five thousand a day now, but you would build a plant for that, or more, correct?
I'm, yes.
Pfizer, not sure what this is, I don't know if there's other businesses, is there any, you know, potential other business coming on that property? We don't want, we don't want to limit ourselves for the future.
You don't want to limit yourself, I think you need to find, you know, when, when a finished study would be updated, you've got to find that spot between what makes sense for how much you want to grow, you know what I mean?
Right.
And how much you can afford now, when you're part of a company, you could also consider building the bill, the building big enough?
Right.
And you can, you know, you can do enough equipment, so to speak, for that.
Right.
With, with some, and if you needed to add, you could, I mean, that's just one possibility.
Now, were you guys involved in the, in the load testing after we put that new pump in, was your company?
No.
No, the, okay. Out of this period, to see where it would work. So, realistically, from your standpoint, you looking from the board to see what we want to do with the plant?
Well, I mean, I-
Or kind of what our future plans are?
Yeah, I, I mean, it was more of, like I said, I've had some, some, a couple meetings with, I've been in staff with Gene.
Right.
And some conference calls, and just talked about the old plant, it was old technology, labor-intensive, as we said, um, so it was a little bit of coming and talking to the board tonight about what are the next steps, what are the options available? Um, I think if you're serious about considering moving forward, which I think at some point you're going to have to.
Sure.
It's really finishing off a study of, you know, what are the options and what's it going to cost, you know, putting it all on paper, and then looking for money.
Well, that's, yeah.
You know, it's looking for money. Um, I think that's something we feel like we bring at heart in the Judas that's different than a lot of our competitors, is, uh, you know, we call it engineering plus, we're pretty good at, uh, knowing the programs, because we know, you can't just go.
Sure.
You have to find money.
Is there money out there for it?
You have to find money.
Is there money out there for it?
Yeah, there's some money out there, I mean, this reminds me a little bit of the city mechanic bill that we're helping right now, um, they're in a similar type situation. Um, they got going on an update to their study after sitting and debating on it for five, six years, um.
You don't want that.
You know what I mean, no?
Yes.
You know, they were, they did that, trying to figure out what to do.
Sure.
Um, you know, they had some health violation, you know, you know, hit them with a couple violation letters, they have, um, they've had some times where they've had to reduce sprinkling in the summer and things like that, um, so we did a study for them, updated it, did some grant applications. You know, their first phase is about a four million dollar job, they're going to get about a two million dollar grant, it looks like, two million and zero percent. Um, and that's not, you know, that's no guarantee of anything by, by, by.
Well, if they have to start moving forward, their upgrades, do they have to go for a whole new tower, or what do they need?
They are looking at hooking into an alternate source.
So, truly?
And, because they built a new plant a few years ago, seven, eight years ago, and they're having source problems. So, what's going to be fixed, work on their source to some degree?
Right.
But they're also going to work for a redundant secondary source, um, which is not, which is a pretty good option for them, is what they're hoping to handle the sort of options, so, um, so, you know, there's a lot of different communities we've worked with in New York State that's happening, and they need our help. And what we see is the state program for the DFC, you can, depending on your criteria for environmental hardship and economic hardship, qualify for, a project can be funded with grant money up to seventy-five percent, up to a max two million dollars, and then normally with that, you can get zero percent. That's the one program. Um, there's the CFA program, which ties really more to economic, um, you know, trying to tie it in with job creation and economic development.
Sure.
That one may be, depending on what happens to your fire, a, a potential.
Right.
But you've got to be able to find someone that you've got to be able to talk to about, uh, you know.
Sure.
If they come, you've got to have enough water, and then I think it would be a very sharp, but you've got to have them.
But you've got to have somebody interested, and you've got to be able to, you're going to use the same plumbing and everything, right? Same pipe being, and all that, remain, if you put a new one up by the tower?
Um, you mean in terms of in the road bikes?
Yeah.
All the, yeah.
Yeah, nothing would change here.
Nothing would change there, that's it.
We're just bypassing this, still a plant down below?
Yeah, we'd still feed it from the lake, put some pumps in down below here, and find the bulb, and pump it up to a new plant. If, if that's where it ends up, you know, I know there's been discussion for that, that location seems to make sense if you make it up there. I think you'll answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, tonight you're looking to see if the board wants to move forward with the remainder of the study?
Yeah, I mean, I think what we were hoping to look at was, you know, what, what's the general schedule that we see, you know what I mean? And what is, exactly, what is the board thinking about with regard to, um, interest and timing of moving forward, pursuing, you know, funding for, for the water plant?
Sure.
Because I think if you, you know, take a decision that you think you want to move forward, I mean, the village proposal will do the study, do some grant applications, um, really the, uh, the season's sort of hitting comes summertime for the applications. The CFAs, which is some community development law grant money, some department of state POS, local government efficiency money, and the economic development money, that, those applications are all due normally in the July timeframe?
Right.
And then you've got to be ready for environmental facilities corporation come in and all of the September and November. So, you're kind of looking at those applications or do that. So, normally you want the study done, which will take a couple of months ahead of time, and then the applications, and you have that's a couple of theories and stuff, it'll take a couple of months.
So, great talk, great timeframe.
Yeah, that's why we felt it was, you know, a good time to kind of come up and start talking to the board, see what the board thinks, that we think come January, February at the latest.
Strong point.
It's, it would be time to consider it, if you want to get in the game to start looking for some money. I think you're going to have to at some point.
Right.
My worry is you're going to end up putting a good-sized Band-Aid down there, and a fairly costly one, and you're not even going to be able to use it for the long-term risk.
Sure. So, so, Gene has all the information on what costs for the studies?
I have not given her the proposal, we talked before, but I could get something.
You could do that for us, through this way of another meeting?
Okay.
Before that time, we can discuss what we want to do, and the cost of the, and how much it would come with the studies, and see where, obviously not the board has to do.
Good assignment.
Things fall apart, so, so, mind with that, so, does that sound to you guys?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Want to keep it short and sweet.
There you go.
Open the meetings are promised at this time, anybody wishing to address the board, they do so. There being, you know, wishing to talk to us at this time, not a chance at the end of the meeting. Okay, minutes of the previous meetings, November sixteenth, twenty-fifth, and December third.
There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, move and carry. Uh, bills, you all have copies. Is there any additions or additions, sir?
No, there is not.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the bills?
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Trudwell, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, move and carry, correspondence.
I have one item tonight, mayor, board of trustees, as you are all aware, I've chosen January eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen to be my last day of employment with the village of Ross's Point. This letter will serve as my notice of retirement, however effective immediately, I am resigning from my position as the village clerk, village registrar, zoning board secretary, and planning board secretary. It's hard.
I will continue to work in my capacity as senior typist until my retirement in January. I wish to thank the board of trustees, present and past, along with the residents of the village of Ross's Point, for giving me the opportunity to serve you as an employee for the village for the past twenty-seven and a half years. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Need a motion, board?
Motion to accept, Mr. Brett.
Second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, move and carry. And with that, Mrs. Hanfield, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
You're off to a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, report to the mayor and trustees. I need to announce that I appointed Donna Boehmelt to position of full-time village clerk on November twenty-fifth, special meeting. I need a motion for approval.
You, no, you don't have to approve, that's already been approved. You need to appoint her as the registrar in the office.
I appoint Donna, Donna also to position of registrar, zoning board secretary, and planning board secretary, and I need a motion for that.
Motion to accept.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Trudwell, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, at this time, Gene, administrator, will administer the oath of office to Donna.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay, repeat after me. I, Donna Boehmelt.
I, Donna Boehmelt.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Village clerk, registrar, zoning board secretary, and planning board secretary, according to the best of my ability.
Village clerk, registrar, zoning board secretary, planning board secretary, according to that.
Upon its worship. Can't say on my agenda to remind everybody that, uh, the IED is giving away light bulbs, LEDs. Bring in your light bulb, and then we'll hand you two of them, your December light bulb.
We'll be paid to it, yeah.
Have a resolution on a, close-out resolution, our sign?
Whereas the board of trustees has determined that the village no longer needs the Ross's Point Gateway Wayfinding Sign Project, C zero three one five three six Capital Project Fund, because the project has been abandoned, whereas the treasurer has submitted a complete accounting of the project's revenues and expenditures showing a deficit balance of nine hundred and forty-five dollars to the fund, see attached, it's in the back of the resolution. Be it therefore resolved that the board of trustees does hereby declare the project abandoned and authorizes the treasurer to close out the Capital Project Fund and transfer nine hundred and forty-five dollars from the general fund account number ninety-nine fifty-nine point zero one point nine hundred to the Capital Project Fund's checking account, GL two hundred point seven nine, covering the deficit balancing the Capital Project's funds balance. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Need a motion?
Motion to accept the resolution?
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore, vote, all vote, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Ma, trustee Trudwell, and the mayor votes, sign. Reminder to the library board, planning board, and village board, and zoning board, mandatory training, workplace, closet, uh, blah, and harassment.
Employees.
Yeah, and, yeah, but that's, we have to, mandatory training by schedule, and the training will be twelve, nine, fifteen, at the city center, and there will be two sessions, eight AM and ten AM. So, please contact, well, it used to be, uh, Carol.
Still is. Not a slur. No, it's not. No, Donna. No, Donna.
Okay, approval of IEE funds to purchase utility billing software, and our sign can give us more off the back.
I had to pass out a memo via email to board members regarding, uh, the reasons why we want to switch software companies for our utility billing software, and we have a quote from the company, and the last time we did this, IEP paid for the whole software, this time, Georgia Secured Funds paid for half of it, and due to the resolution that was passed at, I think it was in November, meaning regarding IEE funds, any expenditures over five thousand dollars must have board approval, we're seeking board approval for that, so they can restrict those funds.
Board approval for that, the remainder of the funds that come from IEEPs, that what you asked?
Yes, the fifteen thousand dollars.
But it brings up more up-to-date.
This is a more user-friendly program, other programs fifteen years old, and, uh...
Make a motion to approve the utility billing software?
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Trudwell, is any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, move and carry. Second thing is, uh, we have, Dave Trudeau from IEEP did a study up at the wastewater plant, or the lighting up there, and he came up with some proposals, and he got three quotes, and Green Mountain Electric of Plasberg, nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, and I need approval for that. I'm going to change all those lights up there to LEDs.
He got, he got three quotes, where are the other two quotes?
Uh, Heinz Electric in Plasberg, twenty thousand, Champlain Valley Electric, twenty-two thousand.
You're going to put LED lights?
Outside and inside.
And IEEPs taking?
Yeah, IEEP will take that energy efficient.
Now, are we doing the install, or is that just the lights?
We're doing the install.
And they're paying the bill a hundred percent other than the install.
Aye.
They're paying the bill a, a hundred percent other than the install, correct?
Other than the install.
Yep.
Make motion to get the lights.
I'll second that.
Are we going to surplus the old ones?
Yes, we have a new policy that we started today at, uh, Gene's meeting. Anything that's surplus, that's going to be surplus, will be brought to the sewer plant and stored.
Who's going to deem this stuff surplus?
Well, they'll give us the list, and the board has to deem the surplus. Who made that motion?
Junior.
Moved by, uh, junior Moore, trustee Moore.
Brad.
And Brad, trustee Martin, seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carrying.
Motion to surplus the other lights?
Oh, it's going to be a while yet.
It might not have a rate?
No.
No, because there'll be other things to be surplus from.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of stuff.
Are you going to have a whole big list that much up?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for me, trustee Martin.
I request an executive session to discuss city center personnel.
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore, vote, all vote. Uh, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Ma, and then trustee Trudwell.
Aye.
And then mayor votes. Motion to go into executive session to discuss, um, stage committee issue. Not on the list. Oh.
Second that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Trudwell, vote, all vote, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Ma.
Aye.
Trustee Trudwell.
Aye.
Come on over.
Uh, I just want to do an update on-
Wait a minute. And the mayor votes.
Mayor votes, thank you. All right?
Yeah.
Just want to do an update on the fire truck, uh, being, well, Mike, uh, we went down, uh, take a look at the fire truck, it didn't seem to do what it was supposed to do for, uh, pump wise, we have the chief here, uh, chief, any words on it?
Yeah, um, as Brad said about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, we took a trip down to Pennsylvania to look at a, a used fire app, used fire engine, um, that a company has for sale down there, in hopes of replacing our nineteen sixty-seven engine, that's seen its better days, been a good truck, but it's almost fifty years old, it's time to start thinking about updating it. Went down, we, we took a look at it, uh, pumped with it, uh, truck's in really good shape, it's a nineteen ninety-four engine, uh, meets most of the needs that we would have, it's got a lot of our wish lists, uh, we have some, you know, there's a lot, when you're looking at a used truck, there's a lot of things out there, like the length of the truck, and pump size, and water tank size, and a lot of things that you have to take into consideration when you're trying to fit it into our fire station, so, to get a lot of the things on the wish list, this looks like a decent truck, it's a stainless steel body, it's not in a rust, uh, it's made by a manufacturer called Four Guys, it's also the company that made our tanker that we have now, so we know their workmanship, it's a good quality truck, uh, seems good, they were asking sixty thousand dollars for the truck, we've gotten down to, they said they'd take fifty thousand for it, so we've got ten thousand dollars off their asking price right now, uh, seems good, uh...
They've also got some people down there who can do the lettering, we could be lettered there, even if they're not going to come here, um, just want to get, uh, John Bernard, uh, trip to go down there to take a look at the engine, make sure the engine is what it is. It's a second shot, but it's worth it, the truck seems to be worth it.
Those of us that went, we, you know, we know our fire truck, but I'm not a mechanic, I'm not going to profess to be one, and I would feel a lot more comfortable buying a piece of used apparatus if someone that is a mechanic for a living was, was able to go down and take a look at it and make sure I'm not missing something.
Are we looking for a motion to have John go down? Are you going down with him, Brad? Or somebody, I mean, you're going to send him alone, is he going?
I'm not sure, I'm not going down this time.
Chief, you going with him, no?
During the week, I'd have to take vacation, and it's going to, I mean, I'm sure Walt would go with him, might be available to go again, uh, if someone else on the board wants to go.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to allow two people to go down, John and, uh, somebody from the fire department to go down, take a look at this truck, check out the engine.
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore, is there any discussion, board? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carry.
That's all they have, Mr. President, thank you.
Excuse me, um, we did get a request this afternoon for coach personnel executive session.
Executive session for coach?
Personnel.
I'd like to do a question. You surprised me.
Oh, like to request an executive session for coach personnel?
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore, uh, vote, all vote. Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Ma.
Aye.
Trustee Trudwell.
Aye.
And the mayor votes.
I, can we get that, sorry guys?
Thank you, trustee Martin.
Can I say the executive session's for?
That's it. Just because we know you like to enjoy doing them. Thank you, trustee Moore. Trustee Ma.
The one thing I have is, I'd like to authorize the electric department to attend the twenty sixteen money for her safety and training program. I'd like to authorize Brian, uh, Jason and Eric to attend this, I think it'd be good if you attended it too, Brian, where's it at, Charlie? What are your thoughts on that?
Plasberg, Plasberg.
They're in Plasberg, yeah.
For?
Eighteen hundred dollars.
For the? For the sixteen hundred dollars?
Eighteen hundred dollars.
Per person?
Yeah.
I think we need to look into it, to see if we're getting our money's worth. To me, to send somebody away to learn how to run a forklift or do a pull-top rescue is not feasible, and I've been in my position for over twelve years, and Bobby Clark was in it for fifteen years, and why would you send a teacher to a, to a, a training school that I taught that school when they came up here one time to show them how to pull underground cable?
Is it safety?
It is, I meet all the requirements of my job.
Pull-top rescuing?
I don't need to do pull-top rescue.
You don't need to do pull-top?
No, that is a qualification of the municipal electric for your lineman that is in that position. When you look at my title, I fulfill all requirements of my title. When you look at my title, I fulfill all requirements of my title.
But don't you work on the lines and everything?
Do I?
Yes, that's what I'm asking, do you work on the line and everything?
When, when I need to, yes, but with the thirty-two years' experience I had, you're changing policy in midstream here. When I tell you I meet all the requirements, I fulfill the civil service requirements for my job.
Safety's always, it's not just.
Right, and you know something? I do the workplace violence, I do all the required policies that have to be done. I do the CPR and the AED, I don't have to, but I do it. It's kind of a little insulting to me that you sit there and you wanna take and change policies in midstream. I, I'm in a position that I feel that I'm well-qualified for, and I proved myself.
Just a question, wasn't on.
No, I feel it's a head honk.
For safety, it's not a head honk.
No, I'm, I'm just telling you, I feel it's a head honk.
I told you it's safety, it's.
Well, I think we need to go into an executive session and talk about this.
Like, will we executive session?
I have a question.
No, but.
We, we talked about this a little bit this morning in, um, in our operations meeting, and I don't know if there are any other training things available.
Yes, there is. There's engineering workshops that are through Syracuse, which I send the guys through, because they, they need the training, they do need the training. I'm gonna retire in four years, they need to be brought up to par for this training. There's different classifications, just because you put in a resume that says that, that you're the best lineman in New York State, doesn't mean you are, you're gonna need to prove yourself. And you know something? I feel in the thirty-two years that I've been here, I proved myself to this village board, I proved myself to these village residents, I've done nothing but help everybody, and it seems like now I have a board that sits, sits here and questions my authority all the time, everything I do, you sit there and you question, because I don't, maybe some of the things you don't like to hear what I have to say, but that's just the way I am. John Ma, you made a comment one time to me.
I don't think this is a.
This ain't complaints, it's.
No, I know that.
We're going to executive session, I'm gonna make a motion to go.
Perfect.
By John's big no. Can I go back here?
Go back, yeah.
Chris, executive session to talk about electrical personnel? Second that.
Moved by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Tredwell, roll call vote. Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Martin. Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Ma.
Aye.
Trustee Trevor.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. Is that's it? All right, trustee Trevor.
I'd like to update on the library ramp, been working on the project for quite some time, I guess I'll be here now. So, the last meeting, we had one quote, we've gone up for two other quotes for this, for this, uh, library ramp, which would be an aluminum ramp with a composite deck, which is what the grant says, we have to use metal with a composite deck and system on it. So, Jeffords Steel in Plasberg is one of the quotes we have, they do not have a team of guys that can come up and do the install on the ramp, um, so that'll have to be left to the village if we chose to go with Jeffords Steel. Their price, however, it's not really, the, the weight of the steel, the gauge of the steel is more residential than it is commercial, uh, which I think perhaps caused an issue with much traffic that we have there, however, their quote comes in at ten thousand, five hundred dollars just for the ramp with no composite on it and not installed. Stan Jasberger comes in with a price installed, we have to still install all of them, the village is gonna install the, uh, the composite deck in ourselves, um, Stan comes in with a commercial-grade ramp system, handrail, to codes, all that, just like everybody else coded, install for fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, and Fred Duquette come in with a commercial-grade, uh, ramp system, uninstalled, he does have an installed price, but it was quite high, but his uninstalled price is twenty-five thousand dollars.
They all got the same paperwork to go off of?
They all, yeah, I mean, Jeffords Steel, and Stan, and Duquette, Jean, been back and forth with emails with them. Uh, Duquette, we wanted to go with a different type of anchor system, um, in the ground or whatever, system that's already installed with twenty thousand dollars for the install on his time. So, we have ten thousand, five hundred dollars, uninstalled, residential-grade docking, I mean, not docking, excuse me, ramp system. And Jasberger, fourteen-five installed, commercial, Fred Duquette, twenty-five thousand, uninstalled, commercial, and so on, we're gonna have to do with that.
So I'll just ask for the board again.
That's it.
Take away the old one?
We have to take away the old one, correct. We would have to do that, no matter which one, no matter which one one of you choose to go with, it's the same, 'cause we try to make it all the same, so the village is gonna take away the old one, and they're gonna put down the new composite deck on it. Any thoughts, what, what we wanna do? One thing, sorry. I've done, kind of, really, actually, I mean, sometimes.
He's not next up.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping this, in the next week. First one's too light, and he gets, you know, six, eight thousand dollars more, and uh.
He's got ten thousand.
Right.
Jasberger's gonna supply the decking, or are we still gonna supply?
We have to supply the decking, all of these, we're supplying the decking, and we is, we are, we are installing the decking. So they're all the same, they're all gonna, other than, like I said, Jeffords does not have a team.
Whoever, whoever gets here is gonna build a thing in your specs on it.
Correct, exactly, yeah, and to, and to the code for the handicap handrails and, and all that, correct, yes. I was just like, it's been so long, I'm just, I'm just gonna, disciple, open it through tonight, so we could, perhaps, could have been before.
And that's a budget item?
Budget, we've already got the money, correct?
We have the grant, and the, um, the, the village, who are doing the composite, you know, the decking and so on, and so forth, would be a part of our twenty-five percent in-kind responsibility.
We always take a, take a.
Taking the old one?
Correct.
Plus taking the old one. If I make a motion, will it adjust or?
Second.
Moved by trustee Ma, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion, board? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
There it is. I'd like to request executive session to the library personnel tonight.
Second.
Moved by trustee Trevor, seconded by trustee Moore. Roll call vote, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Ma.
Aye.
Trustee Trevor.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
That's all that is needed, there.
Thank you, trustee Trevor. Madam Perks.
Madam Perks, um, I, I would just like to thank everybody, the, the village personnel, and everybody that was involved into the parade of toys Friday night, it was beautiful, we had about a hundred children, which we've never had, I don't think, um, the tree was gorgeous, the, the zebra was gorgeous, um, the light, everything was just, was a beautiful night, everyone loved, so thank you to everybody. I can't name because I might miss somebody, and I don't want to.
Anything, Carol?
That's it.
Donna, you got any words of wisdom?
Nothing right now.
Hang on, she says something.
I will.
Jean?
Um, I wanted to say the same thing that Carol just said, that, um, the trees, the decorations in the village, I know that there were multitude of people that were involved, and it's absolutely wonderful. I'd also like to take a minute to thank Carol for everything that, um, that she has done, you know, while I came on board, um, she is a wealth of information that can't be replaced, um, anytime soon, and if it, if it, I mean, everybody kinda took me under their wing and has been leading me since I came on board, um, but we have had to work very closely together, so I just wanna say thank you for everything. You're welcome. Enjoy your retirement, I won't get all weekly.
And then Jean?
That's it, thank you.
Our son?
I hate to ask this, but I'd like to have somebody request an executive session to discuss administrative personnel?
Request executive session, administrative personnel.
Second. You moved, uh, oh. Moved by trustee Trevor, seconded by trustee Martin, all, uh, roll call vote, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Ma. Trustee Trevor. I'm putting that down fast. And the mayor votes aye. That's it?
That's all I got.
Code enforcement.
Forgot my name again, didn't I? I also wanna address the board and the village residents of, of Carol's experience of, through the years, of helping me out for codes, I mean, Carol was pretty much my clerk, I mean, her code's part of it, and dealt with a lot of, uh, write letters, helping issuing out violations and stuff, it just, Carol's done a lot under the code area, helped me out, I appreciate that, so, thank you.
That it? Thank you.
Brian?
Brian, I'm having a bad night. I got up too early this morning, you got anything?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Open the meeting to the public at this time, anybody wishing to address the board may do so. If not?
The village signs, uh, where are they?
They're going to Vermont to get redone.
What does that cost?
I don't know, I haven't got the bill yet, they gotta, what's happened, all the gold leaf is, is, is gone off the signs.
Nobody here in the village could do that?
What?
Nobody here in the village could do that?
Not that I know of. They're going back to the, the manufacturer that made them, and I, I asked him why, 'cause I said, the sign up on, uh, Route eleven is perfect, and he says, where are the signs located, I said, roadside, and he said, that's your answer, sand and salt, hit them, and it said, that's what causes it.
The one up on Route eleven isn't roadside?
No, it's, it's way up on the hill.
That's it?
You hit it, they're in trouble.
So you have no idea what it's gonna cost?
No, not until he gets them, he gets us an estimate.
Jesus, I think that's opening up, whatever, anyhow. Also, I'd like to say that Mr. Pauski had a good statement and stuff like that, that you guys ought to think about, uh, sending him to safety school, I don't think supervisors ought to go to a safety school, I mean, especially, uh, a pull-top rescue or something like that, I was a lineman for thirty-seven and a half years, and I mean, you know, I was a supervisor, and I don't think that, uh, he should have to go, that, that's ridiculous, especially he's gonna retire in, in four years and spend eighteen hundred dollars, I think that the village better look at that. We're all in executive. What's that? Talk about an executive session. Oh, whatever. First of all, I had no idea it was eighteen hundred dollars, I thought it was a free thing to go to, it was only a suggestion, they didn't say you had to go, if you wanted to go, you couldn't go, that's all I was saying.
But Brian's years of experience does weigh on decisions and the cost. I do appreciate what Brian does for the village.
Oh, I do too, he, he's pretty intelligent, I'll tell you that, that's all I have to say.
Any way outs? If not, take a motion for recess.
Motion for sure recess, second.
And, uh, first thing, second, and second, I'll be with the library board.